Well, good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order. Today being October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we are in the usual location at the Higgins Middle School library. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and we're also being broadcast live on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start off the meeting with a moment of silence, and I wanted to dedicate this moment of silence to a gentleman who passed away this past week. I think a man we all know, knew well, Tim Barry. Tim was a retired guard at, for the State of Massachusetts Department of Corrections. Was also a member of the Army National Guard. He was a member, former member of the PBD School Committee, was involved in countless city activities and organizations, Knights of Columbus, very active in a whole bunch of city organizations, and he was our Santa Claus for a number of years in our Christmas activities and holiday activities for City Hall. Just a fine man who has passed away too young, and I just wanted to ask to keep him and his family in your thoughts during this moment of silence. So could I ask you to please stand for a moment of silence? Thank you. Now I'm going to turn it over to our Superintendent Kara Mertag, who is going to be introducing two outstanding students from the Center School today. Turn it over to you, Ms. Mertag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm so excited to invite Kayden Breen. Kayden is the daughter of Brandy and Dave Breen. She has an older brother, Patrick, who's in sixth grade at the Higgins Middle School, and a grown-up sister, Alyssa. Kayden is a very creative student. She was on the Center School DI team last year, and her favorite class at school is art. At home, she likes to paint with acrylic paints, has a pottery wheel, and likes to bake. That's fun. She is also a member of the Center School Garden Club. Kayden wants to be a professional baker when she grows up. Welcome. Thanks, Mom and Dad, for being here as well. Ethan Hartford. Ethan is a son of Stephanie and Christopher Hartford. He is an eleven-year-old and is in Mrs. Brinkley's fifth-grade class at Center School. He has a younger brother, Liam. Thanks for being here tonight, Liam, who is a second grade, at second grade at Center as well. Ethan's favorite school subjects are math and reading. Ethan loves to play sports, including soccer, lacrosse, football, and basketball. He hopes to continue playing sports through high school. Welcome, Brandy, and thanks, Mom and Dad, for being here. And Mrs. Orfanos, the Center School Principal, thanks for being here tonight.
I always greatly enjoy that moment, I know all of us do, to honor some outstanding students. Now we also have some other outstanding students who are here today. One, if there's no objection, will go right to our Student Advisory Council. I know they're busy, have homework to do, and some of them came right from the soccer field. But it's great to have you here. This is our first meeting with the Student Advisory Council.
Yes. Lots to tell us.
Lots of.
We've got a lot today.
Excellent. Well, first, could you introduce yourselves, and then we can jump into the report.
Yes, of course.
Hi, my name is Edson, and I'm a junior.
I'm Amber. I'm a junior as well.
Hello, I'm Jada, and I'm a sophomore.
Also, we have new clubs here at the high school. We have pamphlet. I just wanted to give you all one.
Motion received.
Thanks, Amber. Oh, this is terrific. Thank you for this information. So, Jada, Amber, we'll turn it over to you, and you can jump right into it.
So, to start, I'd like to say that PBD High really likes to get involved. It's doing really well right now, and a couple of things that we have done so far is a talent show on the twenty-eighth, which Dr. Lord performed at. Well done. Great performance. And we have a Correl Coffee House coming up this Friday. I believe it is, let me see. No, yes, it's on the eighteenth, this Friday, and the upcoming production of The Addams Family, November twentieth through the twenty-two. So we have a lot of events coming up. We would like to get involved with our students. And we also have a beautiful guideline called the Seven Visions of the Graduate, which involved being a pathfinder, effective communicator, global thinker, problem solver, team player, self-manager. These really help a lot with the students because it gives the students a chance to really apply these to their academics and outside lives. So it really allows you to use these as a way of expressing creativity, being individual, having your own mindset, just really helps a lot with the students, I feel personally, and helped me as well.
So, to start, our athletics, fall sports are all doing well. Girls' soccer, we just had a car wash to raise money, and we also had an online store that like sells a bunch of like PBD soccer apparel, things like that. Also, we had our college fair at the school. A bunch of colleges came. It was, I'm not sure the date, it was six to eight. A lot of colleges came, and everyone was like visiting, talking to new colleges. We also had YPD High Night in an open house. Also, Transitional Partners is a club, it's on the pamphlet. It's, they meet every Friday for lunch, and upperclassmen is matched with like a first-year student, and they meet for lunch in the melting pot. Also, the science club on there is new. My teacher, Ms. Clark, I think she runs it, so that was added. And also, Niask visited, that was a big thing, and Israeli teachers are coming to visit and get toured around our school. We're gonna take them on the tours, and I believe we're like a very diverse school, so they're gonna get an inside look on how it is inside PBD High. Also, junior and senior classes, they are raising tons of money because those are very important. Junior class, I'm class president, so we set up a school store, and we raised a lot of money. It's still open, so if anybody wants to buy some Tanner's apparel, I suggest you should do that. Also, we are selling money at the Halloween dance. We, no, we're selling like food and pizza and drinks and stuff like that at the Halloween dance coming up. We also had a car wash, and the portion of the proceeds went to Darcy Boucher. She is, she's in my grade in the class of twenty-twenty-one, and she has cancer, so we donated a portion to her. And we also had a bake sale at the college fair, and we made tons of money with that. So also, this, lastly, the senior class, they had their senior luwawap kowloon's, and they have their Halloween dance coming up. Lastly, for the seniors, they do like a senior video, and all the seniors, they visited like their past elementary schools to like get in the part of the video. It's like the throwback part. So all the seniors visited their past elementary schools and filmed there.
So adding on to stuff we're doing at PBD High, so mock trials just began their introduction trials, and soon they'll be going to the courthouse on October eleventh. It was Gene Day, and it was for the Darcy Bouchard fundraiser. Also, PSATs are this Thursday and this Saturday, and a good portion of students signed up for that. Also, recently, we had picture day, and it was, it was pretty good. We're gonna get our IDs, new IDs, soon. And with our new attendance policy, students can only miss four days per quarter, and right now, we have a ninety-five attendance rate so far, and it really, really helped out a lot. Also, the student body loves our new principal, Dr. Lord.
We really do. He's really involved. He gets all the attention.
No, keep going.
Yeah, the music, and yeah, like it's.
I wanna see a talent show performance. I think we have to put that on the agenda for the next committee meeting.
Oh, yes, yes. It's really, really great. Yeah. So Guidance is running college visits and career presentations. Today, we had, I believe, UMass Lowell and Plymouth State, Plymouth State University come, and I went to both. They were great. And students just have to sign up on Naviance, and you know, and you get registered, and you can go. Also, many clubs are starting, and as Amber passed out the pamphlets, Culture Club is a new one that's on there, and, and Science Club. So.
Those are the two new ones this year?
Yeah, new ones, yeah. Culture Club, we had a meeting today. I went, it was, it was really, really awesome. A lot of people showed up, I believe like twenty-five showed up, and just like DECA, DECA's like the biggest club so far.
DECA also has a trip coming up, I believe they're on the twenty-eighth.
We also have like math club, international club, Transitional Partners, and et cetera, et cetera. So if you guys have any questions, yeah.
Well, thank you for that report. That was excellent. I know a lot's going on, so thank you for filling us in. I wanted to open it up. Any school committee members have any questions at this point? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you for coming tonight. It's nice to see you and to hear about all the things that are going on at the high school. This is wonderful.
Yeah, this was great.
Really, this is the first time I've ever seen something like this, and I think that's really, really good. Did this go out to all the students to help them choose clubs, or is it available online?
It's distributed at open house to all families.
Oh, perfect.
And it's also online, it was posted, and shared with all the families, so everybody knows what all the clubs are, and as soon as we lock up the times and locations, we'll all need to go send that out so people know when all the clubs will be. They're just getting ramped up, as we started saying right now. Five to Culture Club, twenty-five kids, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah. It was good.
That's, that is, that's huge.
Yeah, and also, Dr. Lord or one of the students mentioned, like in the announcements, the clubs when they started, like, or upcoming clubs, like when they have meetings.
Very good, so everyone hears about it.
So everyone, yeah, everyone hears.
Good. Now, thank you for this. I want to say one thing, that college night, which is always huge, as juniors, you would have received some of the messages. I saw, I saw, must have been either an email or posting that went from the Guidance Department to families on different things to ask at college night. Was that provided to the students as well, or did it go to the parents? I wasn't sure.
Believe it, believe it, did it go to us, too? Was it in our email? I don't know if we got an email about it.
Okay, probably an email, yeah. I was really thrilled to see that because I thought it was very, very helpful for people when they go to college night to have some targeted questions and things to ask the schools. And it was nice to notice also, really, we need to give a gold star to the Guidance Department because they, of course, they always have hundreds of colleges there, but they brought back a lot of schools that hadn't been coming, and it, it was, it was packed in the, in the gym fieldhouse, so that was nice to see.
Like even some of my friends from like other schools, like Saint Mary's and Winfield, they're all like, oh, I got invited to your college fair. Like it was open so big, like it was, it was great. It was over a hundred colleges.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, that was good. It was nice to hear about it from your perspective, too. Yeah. Well, thank you. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any other questions or comments for Student Advisory Council at this point? I know as the year goes on, we, we have a lot more questions and things, but this is great. Really appreciative of your time, and.
Just a sec.
That's pretty good. But thank you. This is important for your voices to be heard by us, so we know what's taking place in the school, and it's very valuable for us, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Just a heads up, you should really compliment Ken McHugh. He was the one who put that together for us. He just, it took a lot of time to make that work, so it was really good, good program.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All the extras are in Guidance, and we're new students in roll, we hand it to new students.
Thank you, my friend.
Okay, so next, actually, before we do that, I did want to mention, we have, in addition to our school committee members, Superintendent, certainly Kara Mertag, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Chris Lord, our school Human Resources Director, Steve Farrell, and I wanted to turn it over to Ms. Mertag for an introduction of a new member of our leadership team.
We are so pleased to have Joe Scanlon, our new business manager. He has jumped in with both feet and both hands, and we're, we welcome you. He comes from Belcher Town and Wachusett, so, but he's joining us. He lives now on the North Shore, and we're, we're thrilled to have him here. So thanks, Joe, for being here.
Welcome. Okay, approval of minutes. We do have school committee meeting minutes from the regular meeting on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. I'd open that up for discussion and vote. Mrs. Dunn?
Motion to receive and approve.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval of the September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen regular school committee meetings minutes, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, approval of bills. Mr. Olympio?
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number four-three-zero-five, in the amount of ninety-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion for approval of warrant A, number four-three-zero-five. Motion was made by Mr. Olympio, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion, the approval of warrant B, number four-three-one-one, in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and three cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Further motion for approval of warrant B, number four-three-one-one. Motion was made by Mr. Olympio, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Olympio. We'll go now to continued business. We have a couple of items, or a few items. First one, as usual, is the MSBA Higgins Project update. Mrs. Dunn, any new updates for us?
No, we're still awaiting word on the final closeout.
Great, thank you. Next fiscal year, two thousand and twenty budget updates. Mrs. Dunn, any questions?
Yes, I had asked about the AP program, how that, and I think it's somewhere else on our.
Yeah, we have it under new business. We can hold it, we'll hold it till then.
Hold it for that, yeah.
Okay. Our next item is the Welch School feasibility appropriation. Mrs. Dunn, any report on that?
We are very hopeful that tomorrow we will hear confirmation that we will be going in on October thirtieth to meet with the MSBA to find out the next steps on the Welch School project. At that point, we would move into an, into a new phase, and we would be selecting an OPM and an architect, and the feasibility study would begin. So we'll, we'll hear by tomorrow.
Great, thank you. We also have open enrollment. Mrs. Dunn, anything on that item?
I do.
Oh. We were waiting for something from the superintendent.
So, we were, at last meeting, I was asked to get the meeting minutes for open enrollment and school choice. So I do have the meeting minutes here that says, Mayor Bentoncourt stated he would like open enrollment and school choice reviewed. They need to consider putting a hold on both for a year, with the exception of existing students and their siblings and their students of administrators.
So who was right? That was a big topic last week, the last meeting.
It was both school choice and open enrollment, so.
So, everybody was right.
We were all right.
And we were all wrong.
So, that is what we are doing, so, in both, so we're good.
Any comments or questions on that?
No.
And parking fees, was there any update or information, Ms. Mertag, you have for us?
Yes. So we are moving forward on that. However, I'd like to just ask the committee if we could prorate, if students after March, it would be prorated, students that get their license and things like that. The students brought that to my attention, and so did Officer Costa. We had a meeting the other day, and we would like to implement that, and we do have, just so you can see it, if you could just pass these, this is what it would look like, and Officer Costa would be running that as well, with Dr. Lord, and the things that it would be going toward, because it has to have a purpose, the money, what it would be going toward, and it would be going to additional cameras in the parking lots, in the decals for the cars.
Motion to receive. Further motion for receipt. Thank you. Made by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. All in favor? That's a vote.
So we will move forward and start that process probably next. Prorate, we have to go down and prorate.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Amico to follow the recommendation of Ms. Mertag to prorate the parking fees, which makes sense, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. On that motion, Mr. Amico?
Thank you. Through the chair to Ms. Mertag. Do we have the recommendation on a fee for that prorated amount?
From March on?
Yeah. Have we thought about a, an amount?
So it would probably be forty dollars.
Forty dollars off.
So all of March, April, May, and most of June.
So, so forty, okay.
Does that, does that sound reasonable?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Through the chair, okay.
Yep.
So I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the Superintendent to add that at a forty-dollar rate for the prorated amount, starting in March.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. I'm not sure if I missed something, but what's the magic about March? Are you just saying that?
That's where a lot of, when a lot of the students get their license, licenses, they're very much.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, it just seems, and if I may, through you to Mr. Amico, it's ten months, a hundred-dollar fee, it's ten dollars a month, so a graduating scale down, right?
We can do that as well.
At ten dollars a month?
Through the chair to Mr. Hockman, do you want to do that for every student? So if a student gets their license in, say, December, do you want to? I, I just think personally it would be very difficult for, to, to basically manage, whereas if we just have one cutoff date.
So up until March, it's a hundred dollars, and then thereafter, it's forty? That's fine by me, too.
I, I agree with you. I think it would be, I think on a management end of it, it would be very difficult to manage.
I'm usually wrong, and you're usually right, so I'm gonna go with you. That's fine.
So we have the motion. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Okay, all set.
All set.
Thank you. Next item is public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? The microphone is open. Seeing no one, we will now go to the Superintendent's Report. Turn it over to you, Ms. Mertag.
Great. So Dr. Lord and I will be presenting the MCAS achievement levels and accountability results for the PBD Public Schools. Our presentation will be on our MCAS results and the accountability overview. And then, next week, we will hear from our elementary principals. Starting at five-thirty, you have your school improvement plans, that they will go into a little bit more depth in their scores. So that starts at five-thirty, and you have your school improvement plans for review in front of you in a yellow folder, so.
I have a motion to accept.
Second.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lord to begin the presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thanks for an opportunity to share a little bit about what the state's been thinking with respect to MCAS achievement and the accountability overview. This presentation will be divided into two parts. The first will be how the state is moving forward with respect to MCAS and its illustration to our entire community and the state, and then we'll take a closer look at the PBD results and see how PBD's faring within that backdrop. So the first thing to look at here, notice this is the year two thousand and fifteen. These are the legacy results for MCAS. See if I can get my pen to show up there. So again, right up here is two thousand and fifteen, and this is the English performance statewide in two thousand and fifteen on the legacy exam. Here's mathematics over here, and here's science. And what you notice over time is that generally the graphs go down, and by the time the kids are seniors, they're proficient in these tests. Again, remember, this is a legacy exam back in two thousand and fifteen. I want you to notice that number right here in English, this will be a good example that carry throughout the presentation. Ninety-two percent of the students that graduated from the two thousand and fifteen testing, which would have been the class of two thousand and seventeen, those kids, ninety-two percent were efficient when they graduated, when they took the test as sophomores. So again, that's the legacy exam, and as you know, over the last several years, there's been a transition to the next generation. They've changed based on the data for that timeframe to look at the next generation exams. Now here, take a close look, here's ELA in mathematics again. If you look up here, is the ELA and mathematics. These are the two thousand and eighteen. These aren't the most recent ones, these are the year before. This is the tenth grade, the last legacy group, and all of these are the next generation, so the grade three, four, five through eight. Notice the proficient levels here. About half of the student population is proficient, and about half has not yet met expectations. The terminology has changed with the next generation. They're no longer using advanced, proficient, so forth. They're using exceeding the expectations. Up here is green, meeting the expectations, partially meeting the expectations, and not meeting the expectations down here. So the main thing to notice is that about half the student population statewide is proficient, and there's about half the student population needs, still needs some help. However, the seniors right here, last year, this is last year's group, the current senior class, ninety-two percent proficiency, and over here in mathematics, they're at about seventy-nine. But again, this is the legacy assessment. Let's go to the next one. The state changed the rules a little bit, and this is why. If you look at the graph here, these are the kids that graduate from college, ELA and mathematics, right here, and they graduate from college based on their test scores when they took them as sophomores. If you look at this group here, from two-forty to two-twenty, this is about one-fifth of the student population, and they tend not to graduate from college. So what was happening is that percentage from around ten percent up to around fifty percent of the student population, those kids were not college-ready. And the whole point is for us to get the kids college and career-ready by the time they graduate from school. So that's why you're seeing this shift in the way the performances are illustrated to the public. So again, that shift is due to this population of students right here that did not stay in college more than one year, despite the fact that they were seeing proficient on their MCAS exams. Makes sense? So let's go up to the next one. This is what they look like side by side. This is the two thousand and eighteen, and this is the current junior class and how they performed statewide. And notice the difference here. Again, ninety-two percent advanced and proficient, the current seniors. The juniors, this changed significantly. It's this group of kids right here that we're trying to capture and put some supports in so that we can make sure that they are college and career-ready by the time that they graduate. Makes sense? So let's go on to the next one. Here is where the cutoffs were for the kids. Parents just recently received their scores in the mail. The advanced level over here is now exceeding and meeting expectations, and you can see all the kids that were advanced, this is the current seniors, these are the juniors over here. This is the kids that were proficient on the former test, again, those are the seniors, and this is the current junior class. You can see this group down here is much larger. Partially meeting expectations is somewhat linked to this passing group. But anyway, the idea here is there are a lot more kids that need our support to make sure that they're college and career-ready as they leave high school. Let's go to the next one. You want to add something?
Yeah, for competency determination.
Oh, for competency determination. So right here, this is that bottom part of the charts, families should have received their letters on MCAS last week, 240, here's that old score, here's 220, here was the cutoff, this is where the cutoff was, when they compare it not, against the next generation exams, and over here is the cutoff for being, this is a partially meeting expectations. So these students here, when they got the letters home, they're passing, but they're not meeting expectations, so they weren't penalized, their targets are the same as they were on the previous exams, but the new ones, they're passing their expectations, and the folks that were not passing and not meeting expectations, those haven't changed. So take a look at those numbers, 455 was that cutoff for passing, and we're gonna put supports in to help the kids get better, but it's getting supports all the way up to here. Educational proficiency plans required, this has been in place for a long time. This gives the extra help for the kids that they need it, there's a variety of courses going on at the high school now to make sure the kids, before they graduate, can make those standards.
It used to be called Student Success Plans, now they're called EPP.
Right, it used to be called a Student Success Plan, now they're EPP, thanks, Mrs. Murtagh, Ms. Murtagh. All right, so that was a, kind of a twenty thousand foot view of where the state is going with respect to achievement, but I want to remind everyone that, let's go to the next slide, achievement is only one piece of the new accountability system that we presented last year at the state level. Achievement is like forty percent, or a little bit right around there for the entire picture of the, of a school's portrait, and including the district. They're also looking at student growth, how well the kids did in ELA and math, the high school completion for graduation rate, extended graduation rate, dropout rate, our progress toward helping our English learners, chronic absenteeism, and advanced coursework completion for the 11th and 12th grade, these involve AP courses, dual enrollment, and other rigorous classes. All of this gives a portrait to the community of a school, so it's not just about MCAS, it's about all of those other elements. This is where PBD district lands, right here. You remember last year when we did this presentation, 2018, twenty-seven percent of our targets were being met, and we were a partially meeting target district. Now, for 2019, we are forty-nine percent, so we've almost doubled the number of targets that we've met, which is awesome. The state averages those two out, they put a little bit more weight on the 2019 number, so that forty-nine percent is contributing a little bit more than the twenty-seven, that's why it's forty percent overall, and we are a moderate district, making moderate progress toward our targets. So we're in that twenty-two percent, and we are headed in the right direction, I'm glad to say. Let's go to the next one. Little reminder about what these numbers are, when you see them illustrated online, if you see a zero, that means the target has declined, one means no change, two is improved, three is met the target, and four is exceeded the target. Those percentages are added into the calculations based on those numbers. Do these numbers sound familiar to everybody? Have you saw these last year? Let's take a look at the district profile, if we click on the Accountability top tab, those of you at home can go online and look as well. The Accountability top tab will show you every school and every district in the state and how those numbers racked up for us, so let's take a look. We are a school forty percent, there's that forty percent showing moderate percent toward targets. Just go back up a little bit, Ms. Murtagh, just back up a teeny bit, right there, perfect. So here's the 2018 numbers, there's that twenty-seven percent targets met last year. Here's the forty-nine percent, this is how many targets we just met this past year, this is, I'm sorry, 2018, this is the one from last spring. The contribution is forty percent, that twenty-seven, and sixty percent, that forty-nine. So our numbers are headed in the right directions for our overall performance of forty percent, and we are moderate progress towards our targets, that's how we're headed as a district. Let's take a little closer look at each one of those numbers. As you recall these charts, this half over here is the elementary grades, grades three through grade eight and their performance, and over here is the high school, and when you look at the chart, they split it into two halves. This is everybody K through eight, this is the lowest performing group in that age group. Same here with the high school, here's everybody in the high school, and over here is the lowest performing group. Now, this is the reason the communities are illustrated in this way, remember there's, for MCAS in Massachusetts, there's been a parallel target. There's been the performance of most of the students, and then there's been a lower performing group at the bottom, there's been a parallel target, and they, they're trying to close the achievement gap by bringing those lower kids up, everybody's going up in Massachusetts, but this group continues to be falling down. So they've illustrated that right here with this group here, these are the lowest twenty-five percent of the students, and over here are the lowest twenty-five percent, so we can see our most at-risk kids and see how they are learning.
This is in your packet as well, because the numbers are really small, so it's in your packet as well.
Yep, so as a district, again, here are the K through eight populations, we had some great performance in science, they met the targets in science here, they had some great growth in English with a two, and great growth in mathematics with a two, it's moving in the right direction. Down here, that illustrates the overall performance for the kids in the elementary grades, K through eight. Here is the most at-risk group, again, getting our arms around those most at-risk kids, there's a two for the English performance of the most at-risk students, and a three for mathematics. And again, the targets are showing some growth in both English and mathematics for those, this will be on the MCAS, this will be the third grade through the eighth grade. Over here on the high schools, some really good news to share with you. The threes and fours here are the achievement levels of English, math, and science, we have met this targets in English and science, we've exceeded the targets in mathematics, which is great for the math department, and including that, our most at-risk kids at the high school, their achievement has gone very well with highs, high marks, four, and, I'm sorry, is that a three there, or two, yeah, that's a two, so the targets for the at-risk kids are moving in the right direction, and that four means they exceeded the targets in mathematics. So mathematics are really taking off at the high school, which is great to see. Over here, the growth has also been really good, here's moving in the right direction for growth, they're getting twos over here, and is that a ones are at-risk, the growth is not as high, but it's really good over here for the school as a, as a whole. This number, can't really explain very well, our data team is looking at that. Our graduation rate is still around ninety-six percent, and our dropout rate is less than two percent, so it's hard to improve on those targets, so that might be why those things aren't changing, but our data team is looking at that. This is something we are very, very proud of at the high school, that four right there shows an exceeding impact on our attendance at the high school. This is a hats off to that entire dean's and, and attendance team that are looking at those kids, they've had multiple meetings, I'll say more about that when we do the school improvement plan for the high school, but man, the attendance at the high school is going up, and as soon as the kids start coming to school with more regularity, the, the, all this stuff is gonna go up, if they're in school, we can educate them. And with, and the September attendance rate was ninety-five percent at the high school, that's like some of the best high schools in the country have ninety-five percent attendance, and I'm hoping the kids will be able to keep that for the rest of the year. If we can get them in school, everything's gonna go up higher.
Absolutely, and that's a, it's just my goal, and you see that in all the principals' school improvement plans, so we're going to get that attendance rate up.
So let's scoot down a little bit and see if we can just run through the, the final numbers. At the very bottom of the chart, can we go up just a little bit, Ms. Murtagh? So here are the weights, here's for the K-8 program, thirty-seven percent for all the students, fifty-seven percent of the at-risk youth, so you can see how we're getting our arms around the K-8 at-risk youth, fifty-seven percent of their targets met, forty-seven percent is their combination, over here for the high school, fifty percent for overall, and again, the at-risk kids are at sixty-two, so it's really nice that we're getting our arms around the at-risk youth, and that's what that number is showing you right there, that's sixty-two and that fifty-seven. Combine those two together, and that's our forty-nine percent for the district for the year of 2019. Really happy to share that with you. Take a look at some of that data, give me a call if you have any questions, but hey, the folk, I think we're moving in the right direction. Do you, do you want to go, do you have any questions?
Actually, about the absenteeism?
Yep.
Were you finding like, were there just a sort of demographic of people, was there like, was it sickness that they were being absent for, is it just because they didn't have the transportation? Or do you know like the reasons why they were absent?
That's a good question, I, I'd have to get back to you, I wasn't at the high school last year, I knew that absenteeism was an issue. Oh, is?
It's married, it's married to different things.
I'm sure there are.
And our data team, I'm sorry, our data teams are looking into that at each one of the schools, so.
They just didn't know, I, I didn't get up and ask publicly, but I wanted to ask about maybe the school food, and you know, nutrition is like the basic kind of thing, like we all need food in order to function, and I think higher quality food, and then, you know, when we're giving our kids processed food and then we expect them to sit down, shut up, and listen, and, and take in this knowledge, right? When they, you know, you give them highly processed, highly sugared, and then they're crashing, and then they can't sit still, and they can't take in, and this might be their only opportunity of eating. I know that we're, we're in an array of different, you know, demographic here, so this might be their only opportunity to eat, and so I think that carries them through into the high school, and I, I've heard through the grapevine that the high school food is also not the best, right? And so, we're trying to get them ready for like, college-bound or career-bound, and how do we get them to like, even choose basic food over the highly processed?
That's a good question.
That's a very good question and a very good point, and we can definitely sit and discuss, I would like to sit and discuss with you, I, I agree, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Dunn?
Oh, we're gonna go back to seats.
I'll go back to seats.
I'll, I'll wait for the chair.
Go right ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you, Ms. Arnotis.
Thank you for the presentation, I do have several questions, and I know we will get more specific answers when we do the school improvement plans, but one thing I would like to ask, do, do you see any type of, any type of trend or any, has any of the, the data that you have currently given you any indication of what we need to do to, you know, improve the growth or improve the, the actual scores? I understand, like, on attendance, even the students just mentioned that, so we know that's a, a good piece that people are really already addressing, but I just wondered if you saw anything with the review of the scores, or is it too early to ask that?
We are still in review and with the data teams as well, and they are very detailed in the school improvement plans that, for each school, and a, a big piece of it is, vocabulary is a big piece that we're finding in all content areas, not just ELA, not just math, not just science, it's just that understanding, and the conceptual understanding of some of the math terminology as well. So, we will have more in the school improvement plans from each individual school. So, give us a little bit more time to review the data, and if we find patterns and trends, we'll report back at the next school committee meeting.
If I may, another, another one, I, I know I've heard that one issue that many districts are looking at is the fact that this new, what's it called, next generation?
Next Generation.
Star Trek, the next generation?
Yeah.
We have points awarded, kind of like Hogwarts and the Quidditch game.
That's right.
I think the people who write this test watch too many movies and television. When people have noticed that it was very difficult for the students because it is completely on the computer, and the keyboarding skills are a, a huge component of taking this test, it's not just testing your knowledge, it's testing your typing abilities and the ability to type and write, and, you know, it was explained to me, and it made sense that that would be very difficult, because that's a, that's a whole nother skill set, and I wondered if you had noticed that yet as well?
I have had feedback from the students, as well as the teachers, saying that they had to do a line plot, so that's very different than doing it on a piece of paper. So, we're getting feedback on that, remember, at the high school level, it was their first year, taking it this past year. At the elementary's head, in the middle school, has had a couple of years, but still, it is a different skill set, and we're working on those skills.
I just want to point out that PBD has done a great job giving the kids a leg up on technology, they walk around with those Chromebooks like we walk around with pens and pencils years ago, I mean, it's just pretty incredible, the skill sets that they already have, so I think they're in good stead for high performance in the future.
Do they have to take the full test on a Chromebook, or?
Everything.
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 Science will be for the first time this year, it was just math and English last year, science was still on paper, science will be on computer this year now, too.
Everything.
Everything on computer this year. And I'm sure that's impacting some of the stuff you see up there.
Yeah, I, I imagine it would, because, you know, that, that, typing is an art in itself.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Thank you for that presentation, both of you, is this available to folks if they want to look through?
Yes, we'll put it on our website.
Okay.
Sure.
Great. If you want to continue?
Oh, sure. I also have, just so you can be updated, the statements of assurance for our carpentry and manufacturing from Essex Tech, our collaboration with them, I, just so you can see it.
Motion received.
I haven't signed it yet until we get approval. From Essex Tech.
Second.
So this is the statement of assurances, so that we are in that program, we do have nine students, I'm going to go over and visit in November, but so far, so good, our students are still engaged and like it, and we will visit in November. So, this is just keeping you updated as we move forward. And we are in partnership with Essex Tech, Salem in Gloucester. But I need a vote.
Superintendent Murtagh, do you need a vote of our committee tonight to sign off on this statement of assurances? We already took a vote.
To do it.
To do it, so.
I think it's more information, but if you'd like to take a vote, I don't know.
If we do, I would just say that we hold off until we have a full quorum.
Okay.
For, for a vote.
But, great, we can do that, but I know that we already voted to have the program, but I just wanted, it's a point of information.
Yeah, and thank you for giving us this, it's a great program.
Sure. Next is an update on the Simon Youth Foundation, collaboration with the Community High School. So the Simon Youth Foundation, we have a wonderful program at the PBD Learning Academy at the North Shore Mall, under the guidance of Mr. Bedard, and we had Dr. Durnell come visit us for the Community High School just recently, last week or two weeks ago. Ms. Dunn was with us, along with Mr. Canty, who's the director of Community High School, along with Mr. Bedard and Dr. Durnell, and I'm very excited and pleased to share with you, I have three packets, if you so choose to take one, of what they have to offer, and I received just today that they have accepted our letter of intent, and we are moving forward in the process. Our application will be going through two more committees before the final vote, but we are in the first process. So, how they work with the PBD Learning Academy is, is they would like to work with us hopefully as we move forward in the process, so you can take a look at that if you so choose to take.
Motion received.
I have one. So, very excited about that opportunity. Just wanted to, this is a point, oop, sorry.
This is, this really is wonderful news to even be accepted into this, the, the selection process is huge, and I think it's really going to help, the, the staff development, the professional development that Simon Youth Foundation offers to the people in their programs is wonderful, and a lot of the supports and targeted help that they will give to the staff are just extremely generous, they're right on point, it's all designed to help kids, and we can see the benefit at the Learning Academy. To be able to have a second program accepted by them is, is going to truly help so many more students.
The opportunities for students is incredible.
Yeah, it really is, so, thank you for doing this, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Very happy to hear that news today.
Thank you. Just a point of information, for kids only, contract has been updated, and we have a three-year contract with them. The strategic plan, subcommittees, I just wanted, oop, sorry.
Through the chair of the committee, did we, did we vote on it, because we had some updates on it, should we take a vote?
I think we.
We voted pending?
We did.
I don't remember the meeting minutes.
Should we vote on, can, can Mr. Arnotis step down from the chair to vote?
No, I have to have a chair in place. Could we just put this?
Hold it for a few minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go on to the strategic plan, subcommittees, we have the, the four committees, we have the five Cs, but we have four committees because it's all about children, so the, one committee already, the Communication Committee already met, we have great plans in place, we're meeting with the Culture Committee this coming week, and we will continue to meet, and hopefully by the end of this year, we will have the action plans done for the five Cs in a living document, so that's well on its way. In your packet, you should have the October one enrollments that have been given to the state. The planetarian visits for grade six are taking shape, they're, they're learning about it now, so Mr. Bruno and the sixth grade house, uh, sixth grade associate principal, we're setting that up to have visits at PBD Veterans Memorial High School. In your packet, Higgins Middle School field trip to New York City, we need votes on this, should we wait on that as well? Okay, we'll wait on that. Do we need, we need votes on donations, too? Keep going, okay, so we'll put those on hold. We don't need grants on number ten and eleven, so, the, uh, we don't- So we don't need votes. So we were in receipt of a $25,000 parent-child home care program expansion grant through EEC, and it's for early literacy skills in the home. It's 30 minutes, two times per week for 18 months old to four years. So we were just in receipt of that, very pleased and proud to have received that. We were also in receipt of a grant of $3,000 from Macy's, and they are targeting winter coats for our students with that $3,000 gift card. So thank you for their generosity. In your packet, you have the student monthly attendance report. Pretty good attendance. We're getting there, going in the right direction. We also have the Aspen Staff Monthly Attendance Report, and we want to thank the data specialists, Sandra and Maria, for getting that completed. So thank you for their support and help. Also in your packet, you have your monthly hiring status report. Baystate Textiles, we have a trajectory of from 2013 to 2018, and that money goes right toward to the PTOs. And you also have the year-to-date report in there as well from the Baystate textile bins that are on campus at the schools. We just had, I just wanted to bring up, and you heard it from our students tonight, that the PBD Veterans Memorial High School College Fair, 2019 College Fair was at outstanding attendance. We thank PBD High School and the Guidance Department for having over 100 different colleges present that evening. So thank you. In your packet, you have the Red Ribbon Week, which is October 28th to 31st at elementary, middle, and high. There are two things that are not on your list that I wanted to add. This month is fire prevention month, and firefighter silver and firefighter gill have been going around to all of the elementary schools in the kindergarten. And the kindergartens had a task to do after, thank you, they had a task to do after the presentation, and they had to draw a picture about what they learned. And Chief Griffin, new firefighter chief, helping us, and the mayor, we're judging those pictures and what they learned. And there is going to be one kindergarten student chosen from each elementary school to have a ride to school on the fire.
That's awesome.
That is so cool.
I want a ride.
We're really excited about that. They did a beautiful job, so I want to thank both firefighters for going into the kindergartens. I had wonderful feedback, and students are really understanding what to do. And I had some models of stop, rock, and roll. So they were very cute. So that's going to be ongoing. We'll let you know, and I'm sure that will be a great day for those. Okay, thank you. As I said, our dedicated elementary principals and talented elementary principals will be presenting next week, 5:30 here, their school improvement plans with their school improvement teams. They have put a lot of time and thought in the direction of where our schools are going. That is my, until everybody comes back.
I think we.
Mr. Hockman.
Oh, he's back. He's back.
Jump to number four.
Okay, we'll jump to number four. So the Four Kids Only contract update is that everything that we had discussed here has been approved by Four Kids Only. So we just want to do one last vote. It's a three-year contract, $70,000 a year. We only have the before-school program at the West, no after-school program as of yet until we have high interest.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
On the motion, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Arnottis, to Superintendent Murtagh. We talked about this quite a bit. The $70,000 annual fee that we'll receive from FKO is regardless of whether or not they obtain any additional 21st Century Grants, it's a flat fee, $70,000.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? We'll take a roll call vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. The next one is the Higgins Middle School field trips to New York City. Each year, the Higgins Middle School goes to New York City. The first one will need two votes, the first one in May 14th and May 15th. 2020.
Mrs. Dunn.
Motion to approve the field trip request.
Second.
Okay, on the motion, roll call vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a donation.
So we need the second one.
I'm sorry. May 21st and 22nd, sorry. And it's 2020, not 2019.
Motion to approve the second field trip as well.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have a donation, a $300 donation to the Brown School from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. With your approval, we can accept.
Motion to receive with gratitude.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
On the motion, I would just like to commend the Brown School. They are doing a phenomenal job of teaching environmental awareness to their students. They have such a great program there, and I think that the kids who participate in these really learn some true lifelong skills. And it's nice to see that they're recognized at the state level because that really is a huge award.
Environmental leaders.
I'm very, very happy for them.
Global thinkers, just saying.
Global thinkers.
Global thinkers, just saying.
There we go. I couldn't think of the little guy, the little icon there.
I do feel as though we need to take a vote on the $3,000 from Macy's. It's a gift card, so it's a donation.
We need to vote on the.
Sorry, I just keep voting.
That's okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Yes, I seconded it.
We'll take a roll call vote on the motion by Mrs. Dunn and seconded by Mr. Miko. That's okay. It's the donation to the Brown School.
Yes.
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 Okay, so the $3,000 Macy's gift card for winter coats.
Motion to receive with gratitude.
Second.
Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, on the motion, if I may. I can't tell you, actually, I can tell you, I will tell you, what a wonderful community partner Macy's and the North Shore Mall has been to PBD public school students over the last couple of years. The coat drive that we ran last year through No Child Goes Hungry came from Macy's through this same process. We just thought that this year was more appropriate to run it through the PBD Public School Department. Macy's of the North Shore Mall has, I want to say we've obtained five grants from them for No Child Goes Hungry in PBD. Their administrative team comes to fill backpacks once every three or four months. They've just been a huge and tremendous community partner. And I think we should remember that when we're out spending our hard-earned money, and we should use some of that hard-earned money at stores and locations that support our students within the district. So I'm happy to make this motion and take a vote on it.
Motion being by Mr. Hockman. Do we have a second?
Roll call vote.
We already have that? Roll call vote, please. The Macy's gift card.
$3,000. Yes.
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 Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn?
It's just backing up on an issue. I realized that the statement that I found regarding the college fair from the Guidance Department was here in our packet attached to the college fair information. And again, I would like to ask if they could be commended because this was a wonderful guide for anyone who needed to look into colleges for first time, students who are the first to go to school. This was very well prepared, and I think it was an excellent thing to send to the students and provide to the families. So I'd like to make sure that they know how much that was appreciated.
Oh, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. All right, we have no written communications today to be received, so we'll move now to subcommittee reports. Mr. Hockman, any update or any report on the education subcommittee?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Olympia, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. School Safety?
Nothing to report.
Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Hockman?
I plan on putting a meeting together for Athletics and Wellness in the upcoming week or two.
Okay, thank you. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Well, nothing at the moment, but in about 10 minutes, there'll be something heading that way.
Okay.
Possible.
Parent and Student Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. A tentative parent advisory board meeting for next Monday, October 21st. The only reason it's tentative is just making sure that it won't interfere with any of the PTO meetings.
Okay, thank you. Building and Grounds, Mr. Miko?
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
I'm looking at November 6th, Wednesday, 6:00 at the Higgins, but I'll just double-check the calendar.
Okay, thank you. City Council and Legislative Delegation, Mr. Arnottis?
Sure, just a quick update. The committee met on October 2nd and discussed school start times, the parking fees, and the new principal of the high school. In attendance were Mrs. Coppender, Superintendent Murtagh, Superintendent Lord, and then city councilors, Ed Cherest and Tom Rosignol.
And Mr. Sassla.
Oh, and Council of Sassla, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Arnottis. Okay, we'll go to new business. We do have a few items under new business. The first one, student attendance at home games. Mr. Miko, anything new to report?
Thank you. Nothing at this point unless anyone else has heard anything. It seems like things went well the last couple of games, and I'd like to table it until maybe the budget season, depending on whether or not we wanted to continue this for next year.
Good idea, thank you. Our next item is the bike safety issue, Mr. Miko?
Sure, thank you. Through the chair, I'd just like to take a minute and thank the PBD Police Department for doing a great job for insurance safety in our kids. And that's what basically that little task was all about, was making sure that students, children were riding with helmets on. And I also like to thank Jason Stone Law Offices for supplying helmets. So any of the kids that did get pulled over and were brought down to the police department, they received helmets, a water bottle, and gift certificates to Treadwells. So I'd like to thank the Gould family over at Treadwells for participating in that as well. And again, the police were basically enforcing a law that already exists. So hopefully everyone can be safe, and we can move on from it. But thank you to the PBD Police.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mrs. Dunn?
I wanted to comment because last Wednesday, the day off, I was driving all through PBD all day on errands, and I noticed students everywhere on bicycles. And every one of them had a helmet on, and every one of them was following the rules of the road. And I was really, really proud of all of those kids, but I was very happy to know that our entire community worked to make sure that those kids were all safe. It was, honestly, it was noticeable that every one of those kids that I saw that day, and seriously, they were probably close to 100 by the end of the day, they all had on helmets, and every one of them drove safely. And I was very pleased to see that. I do have something that I would like to bring up in conjunction with this, and I want to give credit to School Resource Officer Kalella. I'd like to make sure that in our student handbooks, that we have a statement that no student is allowed to ride their bicycle to school without wearing the legally required bicycle helmet, to make sure that parents are on notice, that that's a requirement, that if they're going to ride their bike to school. And I mean, we are, we want to encourage people to ride their bikes to school, but we want to make sure that they're following the law. So I wanted to ask if that could be referred to Quality and Standards, if it needs to be, for inclusion in the, all K-12 student handbooks. So I'd like to make a motion that it be referred to Quality and Standards, so moved.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Miko. All in favor? That's a vote. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you.
And I just want to also echo those comments real quickly as well. I wanted to thank Chief Griffin, Student Resource Officer Ryan Kalella, and other police officers and those that donated. That was a terrific program. It was an educational opportunity for our students. I think it was necessary. Certainly, my office had received a number of calls expressing concern about some of the students driving without helmets, and I think it was an issue that the community was concerned about. So I think it was handled well. Certainly, you know, something that wasn't expected, and that always brings out certain issues and things, but I thought they did a terrific job handling a difficult issue. So just wanted to comment on that. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you're absolutely right. Ms. Dunn is absolutely right. But I think it may be, maybe we can go a little further on this one, because this really was an area that Officer Kalella and Chief Griffin identified as an area where we can really impact kids and make them realize the importance of a bicycle helmet. I think perhaps for this one, maybe we can write a letter recognizing the extraordinary efforts that they went through and thank them for going through them and looking out for our children, which they do all the time anyway, but thank them.
Yep, good idea. Let's do that. I don't think we need a motion for that. Okay, next item, Planet Aid. Mr. Hockman, turn it on to you.
Could we table that for a future meeting, please?
Yes, we'll do that. And the AP program discussion, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's on the agenda tonight, just to have an update as what the progress is with the status of the AP programs.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Lord as we, I'm going to pass out where we are from 2015 to now, just an overview.
Motion received.
So what you're seeing now is an illustration of AP performance at the high school over the last five years. See a nice little bump last year, up to 62% of the students are getting threes, fours, and fives. But you can see how it, you know, it's waned a little bit, and then it's coming back up again, heading in the right direction. That's how the students are performing with respect to AP exams. The other things that you'll be aware of, the teachers have gone out of workshops. Our AP COR teacher had a week-long summer program up at St. Johnsberry. The English Language Art and Linguish Comp AP classes have been changed, the way they're scoring them. Those English teachers are going out for a two-day workshop, and I think it's two weeks. There are other AP opportunities out there if teachers feel those need to take advantage of them. Most of the AP staff is pretty solid. They've been doing it for a while. So I'm not anticipating that, but we do have some funding set aside to send them out on workshops if they need to. And the students will be taking a variety of practice tests in-house. The science tests happen during the school day, and they happen in the classes during the double-block session. The English one will happen on a Saturday, I think it's in January. And I haven't heard back from when math is going to do it. Math is also planning on doing AP exams in-house on a Saturday. Anything else?
Thank you for that information. That's excellent. Nice to see the bumps taking place. Mr. Miko?
Through the chair, Dr. Lord. Do we waive the fees for students at need?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We set aside some funding in the budget to cover the cost of kids that get.
In the title for.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mrs. Dunn?
My question is, of course, it came up in conjunction with the budget. Were we participating this year in that cohort where we were paired up with, I think it was two other school districts? I don't know quite how they were chosen.
Mass insight.
Mass insight, that's right. Okay, thank you. Are we continuing with that as well, or was that cut in the budget?
That is not in the budget. And we have so many teachers that are, that could teach it within ours, but we are sending our, to attending workshops to get the most current, and they're going to be doing the ones at our school.
Can we find out what it would, what it would, what it would cost for the students to be able to go into that? It was, they had Saturday sessions. I know everyone always spoke of how helpful those were, and that some of the expenditures were for, probably for staff, because I know it was among the three districts, but also for transportation. So if we could look into what that was, because I hate to see that portion of the AP program, and where so many people spoke of the value of that.
It was $20,000 last year, but I'll find out what it is for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? All right. Okay, that brings us to items for next agenda. That will be handled in the regular course. I'll bring this meeting to a close. Our next meeting is next Tuesday night, October 22nd, back here at the Higgins Middle School Library. Thank you for a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.